Greetings, greetings, greetings. Happy Friday. Welcome to Conversations with Nicole. Our special edition, we are doing candidate meet and greets. I am Nicole Everett, the host, and I'm super excited and delighted to be here with you this evening. So, you know, Friday nights, we normally aren't here, but that's okay. We are gonna have a conversation. This is an opportunity for you to meet one of our local candidates here in Tallahassee, Florida. So I want to hear from you. This is an interactive live, interactive meaning we want to hear from you. We want to hear your questions. We want to hear your comments. So if you will, in the chat, let us know where you are tuning in from. You know, know it's Friday, folks are getting off of work, but that's okay. We're gonna still push on and have this conversation. So my guest this evening is none other than Mr. Rudy Ferguson, Senior. He is running for the Leon County Commission at Large Group Two seat. The Leon County Commission at Large Group Two seat. So for those of you who don't know Rudy, he actually was on season one of Conversations with Nicole back in 2016. He is a local pastor, but also just, I call him a community preacher because he gets his hands dirty. Gets involved in a number of things in the community. So I'm gonna let him introduce himself, but just know that Rudy is in on the, in the trenches and getting some things done. So y'all, please help me welcome Mr. Rudy Ferguson, my homeboy, Rudy Ferguson, Senior. Excuse me, let me correct that. Rudy Ferguson, Senior.
All right. That was a good introduction. I appreciate that one.
Uh-uh, uh-uh, you gotta come with it. Welcome, welcome. I'm so glad to have you here.
Um, listen, Sister Nicole, I'm excited again to be a part of such a great, you know, great broadcast. You've been doing this for a long time now and, and you know, I do remember being on season one. And I was, I was less gray at that time, you know, so, but nevertheless, I wouldn't necessarily call it gray. I would call it more seasoning, you know?
More seasoning, right. Because you know, on the show, I used to ask you, what spice would you describe your life as?
Yeah, and this is it now.
What is it now?
This is it now. This is, we gonna call this Silver Fox mode.
Oh, Lord. Okay, there we go. We have it. All right. So Rudy, tell people, who is Rudy Ferguson and why is he running for Leon County Commission?
Well, um, you know, and I'm glad again, it's not the thing on a serious note. It's not the thing that, 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 that I have to do, but it's the thing that I feel must be done. And I'm going, I'm running for this position because I want to run for the people now. Because I've been running for the people. I've been working for the people. I have been listening to the people, learning from the people, and moreover, leading for the people. And this is the time in the season where we need to get this right. Now is the time to get it right, and I'm running to be your next County Commissioner at Large. And for the record, let me just say, this is an at-large position. That means everyone who lives in Leon County can vote for me. I repeat, everyone that lives in Leon County can vote for me. That is so important, so I don't want anybody to feel this is a district. I'm running for the at-large position, and my community service has led me to this point. Sister Nicole, I started working for the late, great Governor Lawton Charles when I was 23 years of age, when he appointed me to serve as the State Youth Representative for the MLK Institute for Nonviolence, which was hosted in Miami, and it's a newly created board. And here I am, 23 years of age, working along with senators and representatives from all over the state of Florida. And I was 23, so they groomed me for the next seven years as I was appointed and traveled the country to United Nations and all over the country to speak on behalf of nonviolent movements. And so, yeah, and so now, and here I am now, 30, you know, plus years into the trenches of the community. I've been married for 30 years. I didn't meet my wife in the schoolhouse. I met her in the church house, and she's my church house sweetheart. And we have been married now 30 years. We've got four grown children and six grandchildren. And so we are excited. And I'm still on the move. And my slogan behind me says it all, you know, serving the people's interests. And so I've served in a variety of things in this community. And currently, I'm the Chairman of the Citizen Advisory Council for the Tallahassee Police Department, along with a few other things that I won't go into, you know, and, but nevertheless, I'm excited for this time. Now is the time to make, to get it right. That's my motto. Now is the time to get it right. Now is the time to make it work. So again, thank you so much, Sister Nicole, for the opportunity to talk about my candidacy.
My pleasure, my pleasure. So I know that public safety has been an issue that you, that's been near and dear to your heart and one that you have fought for, especially in the Frenchtown area, which is where your church is. You ain't telling them about the church.
No, yes, I told you so much. I'm gonna get around to that one.
Okay, all right. Well, let's, let's do this. Okay. So yeah, so talk about, so let's, let's hear your, your platform on public safety.
Well, as the chairman, you know, before I became the Chairman of the Tallahassee Police Department, I was always a strong advocate for nonviolence. And when I noticed that a lot of young people, in particular, black kids, were either going to the grave or going to prison, either way, they were going away for life sentences. And so I felt that it was time for me to really bring something to bear. You know, when we out here walking around and we're speaking and we can have town hall meetings, we can have church services, we could have PSAs and flyers and marches, and all of that is great in its place. But if nothing as a policy or ordinance attached to that, there is no social appeal for our young people attached to something to make them say, hey, listen, there's hope, that I do have a future. And I want to, as a County Commissioner, bring those things into view for our younger generation and our upcoming, and our upbringing kids who are coming into our city. I think it's important to understand that we're not just dealing with at-risk youth. We're dealing with ultra-at-risk youth. Those are the ones who have been hanging around guns and drugs for a good portion of their lives. And that's the only thing they know. And when a community, I would say this runs out of resources, they go to other communities to look for those resources. And I'm here to inform you that we are one Tallahassee, and it's so important for us to bring these things to bear and to bring them into place. So public safety is so important to me, and I think the million dollars that the city has set aside is a good start. However, we just can't just put money attached to it and hope that it goes away. No, we have to bring these kids some jobs. We've got to work with some parents who need some jobs. And we've got to learn to find a way, rather, to teach our young people to put down the gun and pick up hope. And I believe that I'm the person for that job because I didn't stop, I didn't become a community leader when I became a pastor. I was already a community leader when I became a pastor, and so I feel it, and I'll say this with confidence. The Lord has elevated me or elevated my service for the community. And so I'm excited to bring those things to bear. And so that's, I believe that that's my first and foremost, because businesses can't grow. People won't come to Tallahassee to live. College kids won't come here because of gun violence. So we have to work very hard and very smart to ensure that our young people are safe here and our families are safe as we try to, you know, build Tallahassee and be prepared for the next influx of people who are coming here.
Indeed. All right. Thank you for that. So we have a question, and because you're talking about, you talked about young people, I'm gonna go ahead and put this question up. Mr. Marcus Nicholas, who is now one of our newest school board members, is on, and he wants to know, how important are partnerships between the school district and the county commission?
Very important. Listen, it takes a village to raise a child, and it takes all of us, especially. And I would say to congratulations to, you know, a school board member, Marcus Nicholas. He is a great guy, and I think he's gonna do wonderful in that position. And so I look forward to working with him as the County Commissioner because he's gonna need a lot of the tools. He's gonna need some of those support bases and those things that he needs in order for his job to be more effective. I know he's gonna do a great job in it, but I think that he'll even be great if he have the right people, especially the county and the city partnering with the school board to ensure those things that they need. I don't think the school board should have to carry the burden by themselves when the county has a budget of $500 million that they can begin to reprioritize and put some things in some places, and the city does. I believe that'd be, that's so important. So in short, I believe it's very important that partnership should go into place. And I will go even further to say that we should enter into a, in a local agreement with the school board in order to accomplish some things for our young people with jobs, transportation, and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, we're gonna move on to your next area of interest, which is affordable housing. What's your affordable housing plan? Or what do you think we could be doing better as it relates to affordable housing?
Well, in order to really control, you really can't control rent. And we talk about rent control. It's kind of hard to do that, and that's not something that landlords like to hear about, rent control. But we certainly did have some mechanisms in place because we're still at the back end of the pandemic. And that is something where people, their funds has, has not increased, and inflation has increased. And so we, we need to find a common ground that we can work with landlords, workers, along with tenants, excuse me, to ensure that they have a roof over their head. At the same token, we need to really work along with our developers, giving them some incentives to build more affordable homes. We know, I know how this works, and, excuse me, we know that it's a hard task. And the more homes that a developer builds, he needs to be able, she, whoever owns it, needs to be able to make a profit from the homes that they're selling so that they can build affordable homes at cost. And it doesn't really cost them a whole much to build those affordable homes. And then they can sell them at affordable prices. Because I believe that everybody wants a roof over their head. They want the comfort of belonging to a place, to a city. They want the comfort of belonging to a community where they have invested interest. And I believe that we can work towards those type of partnerships and bring some incentives, and not just on the back end or in the middle, but all around, just constantly keep that at the forefront, that if we can get most of our people, if not all of our people, prepared to move into homes, I believe that would decrease homeless and also believe it would decrease poverty. I believe all of those are correlating, or should I say, run parallel to each other, poverty and homelessness. If we can get those people who are coming to our town and our city and give them a sense of belonging and how, and teach, and show them how to become positive, productive citizens of our all-American city, I believe that we'll be able to further go. Because by 2030, we're gonna have an influx of at least another 80, 40, I'm sorry, 40,000 people, if not more, to migrate to Tallahassee, Florida. So we need to be prepared for it.
So have you seen the cost of housing lately?
I have. It is expensive. It looks almost similar to Miami, Florida. And that is something that, when houses go up, the prices of homes, then rent goes up because those landlords are trying to keep up with their costs of their property taxes. They're trying to keep up with the maintenance of the properties. I get it, you know? And they're also trying to keep up with their profit. But we've got to find a common ground in order to make sure that we don't have an influx of homeless people, you know, walking the streets or being scared to, that they're gonna be evicted out of their homes and on the streets. So as the, as a County Commissioner, it's important not just to make policies, but lead in those policies that we make to ensure that the people that are in this city are well governed. They are, they're cared for in certain aspects.
Well, and then the other piece of that too is that the wages aren't keeping up with the, the cost of living, right?
We haven't gotten back to that place. We're still at the back end of the pandemic. And so we haven't really gotten where we want to be, you know, jobs. And I think people are, let's be honest, they're not going back to work for 12 bucks an hour with them because of cost of living. We have the Amazon. I'm glad Amazon is here. However, $15 is not a lot of money based on that they were making $15 back in 1987 when they worked for UPS or somewhere of that nature. We need to come up a little higher. And I would go further to say, Amazon is a multi-billion dollar organization that can afford to do that. And I believe we have to really work towards working with our enterprises that are coming to Tallahassee. We want enterprise to come. However, we wanted to accommodate the people that are going to be working at these places.
All right. Enigma said, let's make sure we keep corporate landlords out of the local market. That's a problem.
Well, that's something that, you know, landlords, because they pay taxes, because they own property, because that's, that's a portion of revenue that comes back, you know, to, to the county and to the city. That, that's important. However, keeping anybody out of any type of market will be hard pressed. But I believe that we can regulate it with the right people at the diocese to really look at that and to make sure we have those control mechanisms in place, to always remember that we're representing the people. You know, we're representing businesses. We're representing the income and the revenue. We're representing the all-American city. And I don't want, I don't say this to be political. I say this to be correct, that we have to work with our business partners, and our business partners must work with us in order to ensure that we are, that we all living up to the standards of that we, you know, we would call to be a great city and a great community, and that's the estimation. And that has been brought to my attention before.
Okay, very good. All right. So jobs, living wages, how are we gonna, how are we gonna improve upon that? You know, you talked about increasing maybe the hourly wage higher than the $15 an hour. But of course, small businesses complain about, you know, you know, they're gonna have to raise their prices, and is that gonna cause them to have to go out of business because people aren't gonna, gonna want to pay those prices? You know, what, what are your thoughts or what are some of the solutions around that?
I think we need to stimulate the economy again. People, get them back to work. Give them incentive to get back to work. Again, we, we must create jobs that, that give people a living wage. With all the price hikes, rent, utilities, food, you name it, going, all the necessities, you know, that goes along with our lives on a day-to-day basis have increased, has increased. And I believe it's important that we work along with our local businesses, our mom-and-pop businesses. I believe the city, if we have, having access to $27 million to give to a sports arena, those funds could have been redirected to, in an effort to really give our small businesses the extra lift and push that they needed, as, as well as an incentive for them to hire more people, to get more people in, until we got really past this pandemic and got, and got past it through, through the financial burdens of it all. And I understand what it's like for small businesses to really go through with the hopes and prayers that their business won't fold in the times such as this. But I also believe it's so important that the county commissioners really pay attention to the small businesses as well as they look at the big, the big corporations and the developers who come to town. We must focus on those businesses who are already here, boots on the ground, who have already invested in this city, their family. You name it, they have it here. We want to make sure that they're, that they're governed and that they're protected and that they have some incentives so that they can continue to rebuild and get back on their feet. It's gonna take time. Make no mistake about it. But me, as your Commissioner, it is not gonna take a whole nother term to get it done.
Okay, so you mentioned the 27 million. So I, based on your response, I would, would it be safe to say that you would not have voted for the 27 million going towards FSU Stadium?
I wouldn't have voted for 27 million. I would have voted for 10 million. I don't take the fact that FSU is a economic, makes, has an economic impact on this city. I get that. So does FAMU. So does TCC. And I take that, you know, into consideration. But because we had already given FAMU $10 million, I think it would have been fair enough to give them $10 million. I don't believe that Florida State would have went lack it if they didn't get the $20 million. I think it was something else that went along with that, which, since I'm not at that table in that room when that conversation was had, I truly believe that $10 million would have helped them and would have been fair. Would have said, thank you. And then we could have took that other $10 million and kept that in play so that we're able to do more community projects. You know, you have a football stadium that is worth every, worth more than all the houses in that community going all the way back down to Orange Avenue and the other ways, expensive sports arena. And then you have those, that, that community, 32304, which is where I grew up in, is poor. And let's just put it out there, it's poor. So it's like building a mansion in the middle of a housing project and saying, yay, you know, look at us, you know? And of course, I've heard the incumbent say, you know, that, you know, he's gonna make sure that Florida State on the back end is, it keeps their word. Well, I, I think that, that's the, that's an understatement to say on the back end. I think that should be something they should start doing immediately and not down the line when they feel comfortable and that they're ready to do it.
So let me ask you this, you know, the 27 million is a done deal. So how can, what do you think would be a good use of the partnership? I guess, since these are public funds that have been utilized. Like, how can we, the public, have access to the stadium in a greater way? Since we, these public funds have gone towards a, you know, this, this structure, right? So can we now have like free concerts there or, you know, other types of maybe events that we historically have not been able to have there? So I don't know. What are some of your thoughts around it?
Well, I think more, and more importantly, I think that Florida State needs to open up, not just the stadium, but it needs to open up some classes, some free classes, submit some educational components. Because no one wants to be poor. No one wants to starve. No one wants to go hungry or homeless. Of $27 million, I think Florida State can offer some free programs and free courses, whether it be for healthcare, whether it be for, you know, affordable homes and whether, no matter what it is, something that this number one university in the state of Florida can produce to the, to this, to this, this 32304 area code, to those who are living in that community, to really bring them up. I think that is, that's, that's priceless for them to host courses and classes for free for those who, and put them in, and put those in those programs to give them an insight on where, which direction they can go, along with free concerts at there. I wouldn't mind going to a free concert, since they're gonna have some new seats put in.
Okay, very good. Now, I want to just pause here. For those of you who may just be tuning in, I am here with Rudy Ferguson, Senior, who is currently running for Leon County Commissioner at Large Group Two here in Tallahassee, Florida. And so this is a virtual meet and greet and opportunity for you all to engage with Rudy in a meaningful way. So this is interactive. So we do invite you to put your comments, put your questions in the, in the chat, in the chat so that we can address them. All right, so we got Tyronda Lee. She said, this is so right. I just took a free personal finance course at Troy University. Much needed.
Awesome.
She agrees with that, the thought around offering some free classes to the community. I, I really, to be quite honest with you, I'm not up on what FSU has promised as a result of these funds going to them. But, you know, I definitely would like to see some type of public access, you know, whether that's free courses or what have you, you know?
I would agree with you. You don't mind me to interject on this one, you know? That is something, that statement about Florida State and not knowing exactly what they're gonna give back. If you're listening to the incumbent, he has never, ever said exactly what they are going to do or promise to do. His statement has always been holding them accountable on the back end. Now, I'm from the hood, if you will, and I know what the back end means. That means you're not getting up anything up front. That means down the line, somewhere in the midst of it all, we'll remember and hopefully we don't forget to take care of you. So we, we, there is nothing that's been written in stone, but the check has already been deposited cash and on the way to the stadium.
Okay, so we have a question around who has been a big influence in your life of service?
Wow, I mean, that's several, and I can always say that one who always have, Mr. Gerald Toots himself, you know, has, I mean, I look older than him, even though he's much younger than me, get that. Nevertheless, see Gerald Toots, I would also say my mother played a major role, God rest her soul. Bishop Reginald, the late, great Bishop Reginald Kate Payton. I would also say my children, who's played a major, they made daddy grow up at the age of 20. So I had to become a man, a husband, and a father, and all in a matter of a certain many years. But I would always say, everybody played with a major role or small role, some type of role in my development. And so what you see now is not the Rudy you would have seen when I met Gerald, you know, a long time ago, when I walked into his studio, this, this wannabe rapper that didn't make it, but God still kept me on the microphone as a preacher. And so.
You're using your voice, right?
Right. And so I'm excited about it. So yeah, that's, I'm grateful for all those people who have played a role up until this point in my life, and I'm able to give that back to this younger generation. And I've been doing that for a better part of 30 years as well.
Indeed, indeed. All right, we got another question. Marcus wants to know, are there ways for the county to incentivize homeownership? Does that already exist?
There are certain programs that are in place, but it's with minimum requirements and minimum instructions. I think more so with that, we have to work along with the developers. This, this is the challenge that they're having. This is what I've seen in my studies. They're having the challenge, working with developers who are coming to town. Because again, developers, in order for them to build homes, they have to take out a loan. They have to go and, 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 you know, call the banks to give them money to build. And some banks will tell them, no, that they can't build so many homes if they don't see a profit coming back. So yes, there are some incentives that we can give to our developers, but they're not really pushing and they're not really out there because developers somehow, it's kind of dialed back because they're saying, listen, it costs us a lot of money to build homes. We're running low on supplies. We're running low on workers. We're running low on all these different elements. When we want to produce some affordable homes, we also want to, we want to make a profit. I'll say this in closing too, in this, in this statement, I would say that for every 100 homes across this country that is built, only about 25, maybe 20, 25 are affordable, and that's the average of what we would have throughout this country. We need to do better, and I believe we can.
Yeah, it is, it's pretty grim right now, and not only on the ownership side, but also on the rental side as well. There just isn't a whole lot out there. So, you know, I'm very interested in both the city and the county coming up with some, some ways of increasing the homeownership or the, the housing stock that we currently have.
I agree.
Yep, 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 yep.
I agree. I love it. And that's the ultimate goal, to make sure that people are served.
I mean, because there actually are programs out there to assist with homeownership that both the city and the county do utilize with down payment assistance and that sort of thing. So, but if there's no housing stock, then the money's just gonna sit there.
Right. And I would also say further that we can't go anymore to the northeast side of town. There's nothing to build out there. That's, there's nothing to go that, that far. We have to start looking the other. We've got to start going southwest now. We got to look out in that area and start building. We can start building. If you rode down Capital Circle, you will see a lot of infrastructure that are already in place for homes and businesses. We need to really start looking at that and start building towards the Woodville and Crawfordville areas in order to, because we can't go any other direction but that way. And I believe if we can expand the, as we expand the urban service areas, we've got to make sure that we're not moving too fast and that now we're not moving without making sure we have our checks and balances. We must be meticulous as we peel back the layers to make sure that we're doing it right, not to be in a rush because somebody wants a bid or somebody needs to get paid. We need to make sure we do this right, and that's, like I said earlier, that's the goal. Let's get this right. We only got one more shot to get it right. Four years, we hurt a lot of people if it's not done right.
Indeed. Okay, so Tyronda said, we are certainly in a housing crisis. Where are we expanding? What about Highway 20 area?
I believe, and I go, like I said earlier, that is a great question in regards to going to the Highway 20 area. Highway 20 has a lot of land, but here's the thing, we have to work along with those, the, the, the owners of that, so those farms and those areas that's way back up in there. We have to make sure that as we work along to, to end, or should I say, curb, urban sprawl, we have to make sure that everyone is accommodated. No one wants to come in and have their, have their property seized or taken because we need to expand, but we need to be able to work along with them. And I believe as we do that, we have to create environmental sensitive development. You know, what I mean by this, paying attention to our lakes, paying attention to our rivers and streams. That's very important to our ecosystem as we build, but we must build. If Tallahassee is going to grow, we have to make sure that we have the necessary space. We have the necessary areas that we can do it, and we have the revenue that, that we can, we can bring there. So keep in mind that every house we build and every house that's sold, that's revenue on taxes that comes to the city for us to do more things, or should I say the county, to do more things and make the city a whole lot better.
Indeed. So additionally, Tyronda mentions that currently people are moving that way, but the buses don't run past Capital Circle. So bringing services, bringing utilities out there, you know, I think is an important thing as well. And so who, who bears the, the cost of that?
Well, again, this is why, you know, we had that blueprint money, you know, and that, that could have went to the play. They have a little clause in that blueprint money that talks about discretionary funds. You know, and that's something that I believe should have moved a little, you know, closer to where we needed to be. The city and the county can always enter into, for budget reasons, enter into a, enter, excuse me, into local agreement, a partnership to stretch their funds and the budget, to have the bus services extend past Capital Circle. People, in case in point, with, with Amazon, moving out that way on, on, near, I think it's near I-10 at Mayhem. I think this is so important. People are going to need the rides to get out there. Uber and Lyft is expensive. The city bus must be extended. If we're gonna grow, then we have to expand our transportation to those places. We put Amazon there. We need to have transportation to get people without transportation on this bus system to be able to get there so that they can get to their livelihood and to the, and make, and make, make the necessary improvements in their life. So they can enter into into local agreement to to solve that case.
Indeed, indeed. All right. So mental health is something that's um, big for me. So I I I want to just ask you, um, what are your thoughts about what the the county is currently providing as it relates to mental health services? Or are you aware of what the county provides? And if so, are you satisfied with what's currently being being done?
Well, here's the thing that I, I'm not a politician. I'm I'm a statesman. And the the reality of it all, politicians, I'll say this, politicians will say whatever needs to be said to be elected or reelected. A statesman is gonna do what's nev- whatever's necessary for his constituents. And so I would say that they need to. Uh, if you don't know how to do it, we need to bring that out of the government's hand and put that into the hands of people who are experts, who have these degrees, who have the know-how, the skills uh, to bring mental health to a place where we can uh, assist those. Mental health is huge and and not just in Leon County, but across this country. Uh, you look at a homeless person, you think that, okay, they just don't want to get a job. No, there's some mental, mental health issues that has that had has followed them throughout the years and we need to be able to work along with them. And I will always go further to say, even with gun violence, gun violence is a, should be considered a public health crisis. These are the problems that we have and we're, we're creating policies, but we're not really pushing the envelope to ensure that we have some tangible working information coming back to us so that we can tell the citizens of Leon County that we are really addressing this. Eh, you know, and and I've learned this in my lifetime is that, you know, if you don't know how to do something, hire a person that knows how to do it and get the job done and have the report back to you so that we can keep the funds and those programs going. And we just shouldn't put them on a timetable. We should continue that because mental health issues is we'll stay with people for a long time. And it's gonna take more than one program. It's gonna take more than one policy alone to rectify the problem.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you for sharing it. So we're still on the bus system. He said he worked at Star Metro um, because people, it's hard for Star Metro because people are afraid of changing. I worked at Star Metro in twenty eleven and it was a mess. So would you be open to the county getting involved in uh, you know, uh, the transportation uh, around the city in terms of what 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 Star Metro currently provides?
I I agree. Um, it starts with leadership. Who who's ever ahead of the table has has to be able to lead lead that that situ- that lead that situation, lead that cause. I would, as a commissioner, work along with the city, the two governments, you know, across the street from each other, working along with each other to to fix whatever the mess or the 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 situation may have been. But I believe that is the only way for those who have cars, taxis are expensive. You know, so we that the only thing that we could do is expand transportation, Star Metro, uh, and any other entity we may bring in town to order to accommodate it. Because because I, from my understanding, uh, Amazon is going to employ hundreds of people and and they're going to need transportation. And it's gonna be a twenty-four hour almost uh, business there packing up things and things of that nature. So it's gonna be a constant flow. And let me say this, Amazon is just the beginning. I mean, you're gonna have other businesses coming all around outside of Capital Circle in the next ten years, next twenty years. You're gonna see. And we're gonna, and we're gonna need to be in place in order to have that transportation moving. We can't wait until it comes. Our first test is here. It's already with us. Let's go ahead and start making that thing work for those who are gonna be start working out there very soon.
Mm-hmm. Okay, very good. So we got Mr. Warren Cave on. He says, you're talking like you need to be running for Senator or Governor. He says elaborate more what statements does. I'mma, I'mma have Rudy talk to you about that offline. All right, uh, Warren.
I am a statesman. You know what statesmen do. That's me. Already do.
So I'mma, I'mma try to round this out here as we prepare to close out. So if you all have any burning questions that you want to ask Rudy, now is the time to put them in the comments so we can, we can address them. But I'm really curious because this is your first time running for office, correct?
No, I ran for office back in two thousand when I was twenty-nine.
Ah, okay, all right.
I gave it a break until I came back and got some information and more knowledge.
Okay, all right.
To do it again.
And so what's been the most um, uh, challenging part about being on the campaign trail?
Woo, but somebody said, Rudy, why would you want to go in such a horrible, cutthroat, nasty environment? I said, we need some clean people in there, uh, and so that we're able to bring some things to bear. Uh, and I believe that it has been hard because so many people who, you know, uh, trying to balance how they operate with me and 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 how they operate with other candidates. And some people will will go with other candidates because they feel bad about that one or uh, they don't want to get caught in the crossfire. Politics is where they are. But I believe that this is not about politics. This is about servant leadership. This is about people leading the people, serving the people's interests, working along with the people and the government to ensure that we have good government. I believe I'm that guy. I believe that I've been working with the city and the county for a better part of thirty years. I've been speaking to the city commission. I've been speaking to the county commission on behalf of a lot of our programs that you see now and a lot of our town hall meetings that I have hosted, that you see programs that have been born out of that, rather, birthed out of those, those town hall meetings. So I feel that only thing I'm missing now is the ability to create policies that stick and incentives that work. That's where, and that's why I'm running and that's the place that I believe I can make a more uh, impact uh, in in the things that I've already done in the community on the ground level.
Okay. And what's been the best thing about your campaign?
The best thing about my campaign is just having people around me, loving me and encouraging me. Uh, my wife giving me the necessary words that I need to to go forward and my friends and all of my uh, uh, supporters, church members, other pastors and uh, community mentors who have been, you know, working along with me to ensure that I have the information correctly. So I would say, you know, I I I I, throughout all of this, it has been a learning experience and I I I won't, I won't never forget what I have gathered and all the people I've met, and I hope to continue this journey in that same positive manner.
All right, very good. So we got Dr. Asha on. She says, it is encouraging to see everyday citizens, our neighbors, running for office this cycle grassroots.
Thank you. Thank you. I would say to that, um, this has been a grassroots. If you look at my opponents, they have raised a lot of money. I'm a preacher. Don't you think I know how to raise some money? Well, I want, and 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 that, but then and the ultimate goal is not to knock everybody over the head for another dollar because this is a a run for the people. Uh, and so when I made this decision to run for office, I made a decision knowing that I would have to use a few of my own little coins, invest in my own self in order, in order for other people to invest. In fact, all the things that you've sunned, you've seen the sign behind you. I designed it on my computer. The postcards that are floating around, that the mailers, I've designed the website, you name it. Because I wanted to make, let people know that, you know, I'm not just running for office. I'm running for the people. And I believe investing in the people will give me the necessary strength to be the victor in uh, on August twenty-third. So yes, I I know how to make this work and I appreciate all the support that I've gotten.
All right, very good. So, all right, we are going round this thing on out, Rudy. I am gonna give you an opportunity to tell the people how they can connect with you and let them know what your particular needs are as it relates to your campaign.
Thank you. Again, Sister Nicole, you always do wonderful, you know, uh, you know, Oprah needs to, you know, go ahead and step aside and let you take over. But I would definitely say that uh, my, visit my website, runwithrudy.com, runwithrudy.com. And that's exactly what I'm doing. I need some people to run with me. As I continue to run for the community, run for our families, run for our schools, run for our churches. I want to be able to have those people with me. Uh, and I believe that I'm a servant, I'm a servant leader. I believe that I am a consensus builder. Um, and one of the capacities I would tell everybody, I was, I was, as I was a state training and exercise officer for the Florida Division of Emergency Management, I learned that serving people is essential because there are some people out there who are struggling, who are hurting, who are in need uh, just as much if not more than you. And so I've learned to put myself in that capacity because I believe that's my calling. My grandfather said it best and said, Rudy, when you find out your calling, your career will come easy. And I believe being a servant leader is my career, is my passion, is my mission. And so therefore, being a county commissioner will give me that, excuse me, give me that edge. So I'm looking for people, volunteers uh, who want to to assist me with holding some signs, knocking on some doors, uh, just being all of, all over in in that capacity with me. I believe that uh, together we we can make, we can make this happen. As you look on the back of my thing here, serving the people. And I'm looking to serve the people and I'm looking for some people to help me serve those people. So again, Sister Nicole, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for this introduction. Again, and thank you for putting my information up on the website. Also, that website does take donations. We definitely need some donations. Buy me a few more signs, get me on TV a little longer, keep me on the radio a little longer. I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You are so very welcome. All right. So we're getting folks chiming in saying, good luck, Rudy. Thank you for the opportunity to hear from the candidates in an intimate and authentic setting. You're welcome. My pleasure. And Warren giving you some love as well.
Appreciate you, man. Thank you.
So we want to wish Rudy a happy belated birthday because he just celebrated, what, twenty-five?
That's good. I love that number. Yeah, I love that number. Yeah, I bet that ain't gonna work, so I'm gonna go with fifty-one.
Okay, now, right, that'll work.
Like I, like my wife says, you know, when you say you, when you say you love me, say it with cash. So uh,
All right, I heard that, heard that. Well, I want to thank you for your time tonight. Um, and thank the viewers for tuning in tonight on this Friday night. Um, you know, you could be doing something else, but I'm glad you are spending some time with us. And let's uh, keep this conversation going. Share this video with folks. It's uh, it will live on the Conversations with Nicole YouTube channel. So um, if there are some folks that want to get to know Rudy better by by this conversation, they can, as well as just reach out and um, you know, his information is on here. So you all can uh, get in touch with him to to find out more about what he has going on um, coming up, leading up to the election. So again, thank you, Rudy.
Thank you so much, Nicole.
My pleasure. Thank you, viewers. And we will see y'all next time.